It is 5:32 and we are going to open this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So the first item on our agenda is approval of minutes for September 15th, 2021. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the September minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Okay, moving on. Public hearing, case number RZ2021-016. Applicant Boski Clark LLC is requesting a rezone of property located at 110 Clark Lane, parcel R63366 of City Edition, block 85, lot 1 and 2A, PTSOF of the City of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas, R3 multifamily to R2.5 Integrated Housing District. And I'm sorry Steve, before you go on, I forgot to announce that an item has been pulled from the agenda. It is case number PD2021-003, 004, and 005. That is the rezone of the property at 817 West Washington, 855, and 865 West Washington. Those items have been pulled. So if any of you are here for that to talk, I just did not want to waste your time. So just, okay. Moving on back to case RZ2021-016. Steve?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, we recently introduced a new zoning of R2.5 and we went through what that new zoning allows and the authorities granted to the P&amp;Z and City Council through that new zoning. And Mr. Taylor Knute is the first one out of the box to make application for the R2.5. And so he's got a project over at the address specified. The future land use for this property is multifamily, but he is requesting a rezone to R2.5 for a townhome project. His particular site plan does not necessarily line up exactly with the requirements of the R2.5 zoning, but if you will look at section C12, I believe, in your packet, I have it highlighted for you on page, let's see here, it looks like page eight. This R2.5 zoning is similar to a plan development, but a little less formal in the fact that deviations from the standards that are required by the R2.5 can be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and with a favorable recommendation approved by City Council after review of a site plan, which includes the renderings with elevations, a finished schedule, and architectural designs that meet the existing structures of the area of integration. So you just want to make you aware that you have that authority under this particular zoning. The Knutes have put together a very comprehensive application and they're, as you can see from your packet, and I'm moving now to page 10, you have the application that they have submitted. And then they begin with their submittals by providing renderings of the elevations. And so if we scroll through, we have each of their renderings on page, looks like 15, we're going to have a site plan. And I believe what they're proposing here are 22-foot wide lots. The ordinance requires 30-foot width lots, so this is one of the deviations that P&amp;Z could certainly consider and approve if so desired.
Repeat that again, what's the difference?
22-foot is what they're proposing. The ordinance generally requires 30 by 100, 30 feet wide, 100-foot depth for a townhome development.
So they're eight feet shy?
Eight feet shy. We also have the floor plans that they have submitted for first and second floor. This is a unique property somewhat to our city and with the location, it sounds like a really neat concept with a rooftop area. And I understand that it will have a view to the downtown area from these rooftops. We do have one letter of opposition, which is included in your packet on page 19. And then I have provided copies of the R2.5 zoning ordinance that was presented before City Council, and then also the R.3. Please note in this, we have not, this is what was presented to council, but there were some amendments made on the floor. And so the setback requirements for R2.5 for a townhome on the front and rear is now 15 feet instead of what is specified in this document. So we need to get that corrected in these documents and have them sent for codification. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Does everybody have questions for Steve?
Yeah, I assume he's going, he requested 2.5 because of the setback in the width, lot width settings as opposed to R3?
Well, I wouldn't want to speak for Mr. Knute, but I believe what I can say to that, Mr. Delauter, Commissioner Delauter, is that this is a simpler process than going forward with a PD. And again, it can provide a little bit of a quicker resolution because you have the power and the authority to accept this tonight and then make a recommendation to council if you so desire.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Mr. Knute, would you care to speak?
Sure.
And then we'll open it up to the public.
Would you like me to address your question right now?
That's one of the things I was questioning because it's already R3 and I don't see you proposing any mixed use. They're all townhomes, that's all multifamily, and it's already zoned R3. And I'm just assuming that you picked R2.5 because of the different setback and the different lot widths requirements. Is that true?
Yes, and Steve was pretty accurate in saying that it, going to R2.5, and I know it's a brand-new zoning for the city.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is because the letter of opposition is to this, is that they wish the property remain R3. And other than the setback in lot widths requirements, I would assume that you can build a townhome settlement in R3 zoning.
Madam Chair, if I may jump in with a little clarification on that. You may recall from the previous presentation when we went over the R2.5, there was also a sister document that was the R.3. And when we created this R2.5 zoning, we also created a delineation between a townhome property, which is generally individually plotted and individually sold, which is what the Knutes are proposing, whereas an R3 is generally a higher-density property under a single management on a single parcel.
I, okay. Rental as opposed to?
So the R2.5 aligns more closely with their?
So what they're proposing to be?
Well, but townhomes are multifamily too, so, and other people who've developed townhomes in R3 zoning.
That is correct, but with this recent change, we are now, townhomes will now be considered the R2.5 and multifamily will be R2.5.
Okay. I'll have to get used to the new?
The difference is the plating. With the R3, it's one large plat, all units on one large. With the 2.5, each unit has its own plat.
Correct.
Yes, and our intent is to entitle each lot, 14 units, sell 14 individual units.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any, anything you need to, you wish to add?
No, I would just like to speak on behalf of our development. I think the product that we're proposing to build here, it's a little different than, I think, than exists currently in Stevenville in this proximity to the downtown, similar to our other townhome development. Our intention is to try to connect as many rooftops as possible to the downtown. We're, you know, just a couple hundred yards from the square pretty much. And we would love to see, you know, curb and gutter sidewalks similar to what we did over there, connect it to the bridge, connect to the Boski River Trail, have access to walk downtown. So what we're trying to build is a really solid product with some really modern-looking architecture. And our intent is to sell them to be owner-occupied. Like always, I'm sure there'll be a couple of folks that want to buy them as investment properties, but in terms of curb appeal and everything like that, I think the proximity to downtown would be really desirable for owner-occupied purchasers, so.
Any questions for Mr. Knute?
You mentioned the Boski River Trail, and my, knowing several people who are, who have been involved in that project, will this rezoning affect that in any way? Or will it affect access to the trail or the expansion of the trail?
Well, if I understand it correctly, where our, where the property line is, the sidewalk, there is a sidewalk on the bridge that goes over, the Washington Bridge that goes over the Boski River. We should be able to, if the property lines line up, or, and this is all obviously something that can be figured out down the road once engineering is submitted, we would, it would be our intention to connect our development via sidewalk to that bridge, which then extends across the river, and you can have access over by the laundromat to the River Trail, so.
To connect into it, or so that tenants can?
Or just be able to have a continuous sidewalk that leads to it, and then you can go down to the trailer.
He's on the other side of the river.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Knute.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone? And, but anybody who wishes to speak against this rezone? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion so that we can discuss.
Would you raise the issue of the opposition letter? Because you asked for opposition in the public hearing.
Steve mentioned it.
We do have a letter of opposition.
Steve mentioned that there was a letter in opposition. The person by the name of Reid Habbarish indicated that they were opposed to the rezone, they wished it to remain R3, but they did not state any reason. For the record. All right, closing the public hearing, may we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, it'll be approved, that RZ2021-016 be submitted to the City Council with our recommendation for approval.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Justin. Just under the gun. Okay, any discussion? I think these look great. These are fantastic.
I think so.
I love the looks of them. I think it's a great addition. I see it as a win-win. I don't, I'm not sure why this person wants it to remain R3. I see this as an upgrade to R3, so.
I'm in agreement with you. I kind of wonder if they didn't realize that the R3 was the apartments? And so I think the fact that these are parceled out and can be, each be owned by an individual, I think that that might be more settling to somebody who's having something like this move into their neighborhood. So I agree, I think they look great.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of the rezone request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that will move forward to council with our recommendation for approval. And next up on the agenda is case number PD20201.
Should we make another announcement?
Yes. I know we have some newcomers in the audience, just to make you aware, I don't know if you're here for the case on, the rezone on West Washington, the properties at 817, 855, and 865 West Washington? No? Okay.
We're going last one, 817.
You're good then. Okay. You bet. I just didn't want to waste your time. Okay. So we're up to case number PD2021-002. Applicant Reese Flanagan of MMA LLC representing Troy Kunkel of Co-Town, I'm sorry, Outtown Properties, is requesting a rezone of property located at 525 West Collins, parcel R33237 of Shepherd &amp; Collins, block 6, lots 1 and 2, and A0032 Blair John of the City of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas, from industrial to planned development. Steve?
Yes ma'am, the, Mr. Kunkel, I believe, is here with us tonight.
I don't know if he was able to make it.
Oh, he wasn't able to make it, okay.
Maybe it was personal, he couldn't make it.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, sir. I believe we have, well, on August 15th, 2021, the commission received and reviewed the conceptual plan for this project. And you might recall that they are proposing 37 units on 2.65 acres, which is within the 14-units-per-acre density for a townhome project. This is a PD request, so it came in prior to our R2.5 zoning. And so they're going through the PD channel on this instead of, I'm assuming, on maybe future submittals, you might want to look at the 2.5. But this is a PD submittal, and so they do have 13.96 units per acre, 68 parking spaces, which is more, two spaces more than what is generally required for a development of this type. They are requesting approval of the planned development, and I would just like to call attention to the commission to sections 8E and 8J, which outline the conditions to approve a PD. The applicant has a very, very nice submittal as far as the information that they have provided for this particular PD. And if we scroll down to in your packet on page 40, you'll see that the application has been submitted. And then they also provide renderings of the structure. I believe on this particular unit, they are having, they, these have a height of 38 feet, which is three feet above the general maximum of 35 feet. And so that's something that the commission might want to make note of. And then also they provide a, somewhat of a schematic showing that the, what the parking will look like. And again, generally speaking, this would exceed the parking requirement by two spaces. They do have a rendering of the floor plans for your review, another elevation front and rear side as well. And then they provide a schematic of the site plan itself, showing the density and egress, ingress and egress to and from the property, of course. And then also we provided in your document the ordinance that relates to planned developments. And again, ma'am, I believe the one exception here would be the height, and then there's also a lot width issue that would generally be something that we might want to look at pretty closely. But with this PD, I believe it's a 22-foot wide lot that they're looking at. And so with that, ma'am, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question. You were saying that this had more parking spaces than required?
Yes, ma'am.
But it says that there are 37 units proposed?
37.
So that would be 74 required spaces, correct? Or is my math wrong?
Well, let's see, that makes sense. Let me scroll back, I may have calculated that incorrectly.
You have 68 listed.
It's showing 86 residential parking, 37 guests, total 123.
Oh, you might have transposed the numbers. Maybe it's 86 instead of 68. I bet that's what it is.
Yes, ma'am. Good catch, and thank you for your correction.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, so it will actually have 86 spaces, is that?
Yeah, look on, let's look on their maps.
Because parking is a big deal in a college town, and especially?
Total spaces are 123.
123 total.
Where are you guys looking? Okay.
Two-car garage for each townhouse.
I believe we have representation here from the developer as well.
And so two-car garage, and then also?
Guest parking.
accessory parking to the?
Yeah, so it's a total of 123. So it's 86 for resident, 37 for guest, so ample.
Okay, thank you for that. I stand corrected, thank you for catching.
Other questions for Steve?
Is, is, you said the height, the 35 feet?
Generally, the height is 35.
And he has exceeded, is that with the main ridge or the dormer?
That's the dormer, I believe, is a 38. I believe it's 38.
So that wouldn't be no problem, getting rid of a dormer, you keep your height?
Well, we have a five-story fire engine in this town now, so I think we're covered.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing and, I'm sorry, your name?
Reese.
Reese Flanagan. Mr. Flanagan, if you could go ahead and answer some of these questions and if you have anything to offer about this.
Sure, so parking, correct, y'all were right about that. As far as the height, I'm not sure exactly how easy it would be to remove that. We're hopeful we can keep that additional three feet. This is something that, over the last month, we've sat down with the fire marshal, building official, and it kind of showed this site plan and these elevations to a lot of people in the city, and there's not been a huge concern from a fire standpoint. So we're hopeful we can keep that additional three feet, but it's something we could consider if that wasn't the issue.
Does the dormer, does the dormer added an additional bedroom or additional living space, I should say?
I would like to think it's just an additional study area, but I'd have to confirm. I can give it to the architect and figure that out.
Madam Chair, if I may remind the board, with the PD, you are able to make variations to allow a 38-foot height.
Right, we're totally within our power to allow that to happen. Yeah. Okay, do you have anything to add, any general information?
No, just from a civil engineer standpoint, we've had a bunch of conversations trying to do due diligence for the city, so we're certainly making an effort to make sure we're moving in a good path. So I can answer any questions, any other questions y'all may have, but that's it.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Flanagan?
Is there any soundproofing to keep out the railroad noise?
I would think there will be something. I can certainly ask the question to the developer and the architect about what they plan to do.
We do not have a no whistle ordinance in Stevenville, and there's generally four trains a day.
Sure.
And I live a few blocks from the railroad track, and I hear it at my house.
Sure.
So I would be concerned for the people living in this.
No, thank you, I mean, I?
But, I mean, but it's not like we don't have other units off of Lily, and we have, we have some units there that are?
But I appreciate it, I mean, I'll relay that, and hopefully that's something they'll?
Just a question.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flanagan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone request? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against it? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
I move that we recommend to council approval of PD 2021-002 with possible height restrictions.
So your, your motion is that there are height restrictions?
Possible. Through the discussion, I'm?
You have to go one way or another with a motion, you need to say?
All right, as proposed.
As proposed. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I mean, it's three feet.
And I don't see where you can take it.
If the fire trucks can reach it, who cares?
I can't see where you can take it off either, because he's got a nine-foot first floor, two 10-foot on the other, so maximum you could pull down is two feet. And you're going to have to have that for HVAC and everything else. So I don't, other than what's up in the attic, I don't understand the three feet. So that's why I was just kind of concerned, but you know why that's third for at 35 feet?
They look to be the same, except that a couple of them have a dormer right on top. That's why I was asking about additional living space. It almost looks decorative and?
I don't know, if you look at the side view, though, it's, the dormers seem lower. I don't know, but all I know is it's three feet. Are we going to quibble about three feet if the fire trucks can reach it?
I'm not, I'm just going to get clarification on why it is 35, if I could.
It's that much more shadow on the little house across the street.
I don't have history on why 35 was chosen, other than possibly, as I guess, Mr. Delauter mentioned earlier, a fire? a lot of it's been earlier in fire safety concern. But again, we have-
This is third floor. I'm not showing any, any additional-
Although, if you look at page, I guess it's thirty. In, in reference to my, more shadow, it looks like the, the roof line generally is the to- the highest roof line. It, it really looks the same.
Yeah, I know. If you-
So, I don't think that dormer is-
Is actually the height.
Is actually adding more height, per se.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Not according to this measure.
And if you, yeah, and if you look at the side view, which is maybe thirty-two?
Right. It looks like it's the peak that's the height.
The peak, the peak of the roof is what uses our total elevation.
Personally, I'm, I'm good with three feet.
It's just an aesthetic still.
Any other issues? People have?
And, and we're, I, I was, with, my concern, I had some concern about Race Street and the acci- the entrance onto Race, or onto Fras from Race, especially of the morning and of an afternoon, you know, at, starting with after-school pickup.
Okay.
Through, I, but I'm told that, that there will be some-
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Fair question for us. I mean, we are making a zoning request change, so it's a fair question. But I can assure you that once this gets through this stage and city council approval, we will then go through the, the review process, which they have already begun, and then we will, at that point during the review process, if a TIA is deemed necessary by their engineer, then that will be a requirement of the approval. So that will be addressed either through an engineering assessment where they deem that it's not necessary with their engineering stamp saying so, or they will require a TIA.
Can we, can we as a, as a board request that, that be done?
If you sort of make a motion for an amendment to his motion-
It'd be in the form of a traffic study, which you just kind of-
But I, I mean, I think what you're saying is it'll happen-
It's part of the development.
Yeah, it's part of the process. It will happen regardless.
Part of the review process.
So it's un, un, redundant.
It's going to happen.
And they'll be back again multiple times before this is over.
Okay. That answers my concerns. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other concerns? Are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezone request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Then this item will go forth to council for their, well, with our recommendation that they approve it. Thank you, sir. Okay. So we are skipping over item number four, moving on to item number five, which is case number RZ two zero two one dash zero one seven. Applicants Alan Vandergriff, Chad Vandergriff, and Coriana Alant are requesting a rezone of property located at six eight three West Harleton, parcel R two nine six eight five of Park Place, and City Edition Block Three and Sixty-nine, lots one B, two B, four B, twelve of the city of Stevieville, Eryth County, Texas, B two retail and commercial business to R three multifamily.
So thankful you're reading this.
Good lord. Steve?
So the applicant is requesting that we consider R one zoning for this. It's currently B two with future being R one, and they're, they're asking that we allow R one zoning for this particular parcel. It's been-
Oh, no.
It says R three.
Is it R three?
Multifamily.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. They are requesting R three. Shouldn't have known that I had a very lengthy discussion with them about the op, their options. It's, it's originally constructed as R one, and that's, or, as single-family residence, and that's where I was jumping ahead, so thank you for the correction. So it's been operated as a salon in a B two district, even though it's originally constructed as a single-family residence. In your packet, I have included the R three zoning, which again, it's a little different than what we've seen in the past, because we have taken the R, the townhome type structures out of R three. Otherwise, the R three ordinance remains the same as it has been in the past. So setback requirements and things of that nature are the same. Have a copy of their application that they submitted, and I think this is certainly something I can share, that the request is based upon the fact that they inherited the property and they simply don't want to continue the operation of the business. So with that, ma'am, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Why, why are they going for R three as opposed to R one? I guess it's currently R three all around there.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so that's even regardless, okay. So they're just looking to fit in with the neighboring-
The future use map is-
R one.
R one.
Right.
But it's showing on the recommendation that it's multifamily.
Currently, that area around, well, it's currently-
Well, it said the comprehensive plan for future land use designates it as a multifamily.
Where are you looking?
Right underneath the recommendations.
Comprehensive. Future land use designates, yeah. So that's incorrect, right? Future land use designates this property to-
As a single-family.
Yeah.
Should be, should be single-family.
Good.
So, single-family future, but to your point, Madam Chair, the surrounding properties are R three.
Currently R three.
Currently R three.
Okay.
And so-
They're just looking to fit in with the character?
Trying to fit in with the neighborhood. And, and also, I believe-
Well-
They, they possibly inherited the property to the north as well, and so they would be considering bringing something like that in the near future.
Okay. Do you have a question, Mary?
Uh, well, yeah. Um, you said to keep, in keeping with the use of the, but I can tell you, all of those along that block, saving except for the property right next door, are single-family homes. The one, the property right next door is, is a set of duplexes. So even those are technically, they're single-family. So, I, especially given that the future use is for single-family, I, I would be hesitant to, to approve the R three, because similar to, to another case we have before us, a blanket R three approval always makes me nervous when you're, when you're bringing in an R three.
I think, I think we need to hold this discussion for after we've done, after we've done the public hearing-
Oh, okay.
And, and once we're in discussion.
Okay.
So right now, we're just asking questions-
Got you.
Of Steve. But, yeah. Good point, but let's just put a pin in that. Any other questions for Steve? Okay. Then let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Looks like the applicants, are, are the applicants here? No. Okay. Then we will go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone request? Anybody opposed? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Let's have a motion, and then we can discuss.
I recommend to council approval of art, no, denial of RZ twenty twenty-one dash zero one seven.
I'll second.
Okay. Is this for the same reasons as, as what, Mary?
Well, future land use is showing a single-family, and it being that close to downtown, it probably needs to remain a single-family.
Entire neighborhood, single-family.
And I know that everything around it is R three, but it's zoned from that house back toward downtown to look like it's going to be R one.
Eventually.
Eventually.
This would be spot zoning, though, if we, if we, I mean-
Well, really, I think, I think it was spot-zoned when it was changed to the commercial, because this was, this was a house-
So if it won't change it-
Before it was a commercial property.
Change it back to where its future use is going to be, rather than-
Legislate.
That way, we get the ball moving in the other direction.
Could, could we? Could we recommend to council, Steve? R one?
Yeah.
Is that allowable? If this motion passes, could we come in with a second motion?
And recommend?
R one?
R one zone?
I just don't want to get these people stuck. They need to sell the house. They, they need the money from the sale. So if we, if we deny this, you know-
Can we amend this motion to deny the R three, but recommend R one?
We would probably have to visit with the property owner to do that.
Without the, without the applicant here to testify, I would be reluctant to change their zoning.
I think the best action would be to turn it down and then let them come back with an R one and go.
But that, yeah, I, I know that the, from their application, I know they're strapped, strapped for money.
Yeah.
So, so they need to sell this house quickly. So that means it's months delayed. If we don't act on this now, then they don't get to come back till next month, so they don't get to put this house on the mark. You know what I'm saying? It's just-
If, if they-
The reality on the ground is for these people, this is going to have a big financial impact.
Well, this is a question for Steve, but if they came back and filed it as an R one, would they still have to come before us to do that, since it's a future use?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Make that a point for Steve. Now, keep in mind that the city council can, can basically hear the case and make a decision.
And make what?
So perhaps what we can do is follow up with the applicant-
Maybe that's what, that's, yeah.
See if they can be present at the city council meeting.
And then they can go through the council and do it there.
And allow the council-
That would be the best action.
Maybe an alternate decision.
Based on this application, it just seems to me that they don't care. They just want to sell the property, and they need the property zoned correctly to sell it. Right? So that's my goal, is, is let them do what they need to do. So if we deny this, then it can go to council. You can talk to the property owner, see if they're willing to swap it for an R one, and then council can, can deal at that level.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That works for me. What, what do you guys think?
And as long as one of us has a dissenting vote, it'll make it easier for the council. They'll have more leeway to decide, as opposed to having to have a supermajority as well.
Okay. They're no longer bound by our supermajority, but, but still.
Supermajority.
Yeah. It's supermajority for the soul.
Yeah, that, they, they no longer have to do that. So, so however we vote on this, they get to do what they want. Okay. So are we ready to vote? So the, the motion stands that we recommend denial of this to, of this rezone to the council? Okay. Do we need to do a roll call vote? What do you, let's go ahead. Mary, do you recommend to council denial of this?
Yes. I recommend denial.
Yes. Bruce?
I vote yes.
Yes. Justin?
I'll vote no.
Okay. Cliff?
Denial.
I'm, I'm going to go with Justin. I'm going to vote no.
Vote for denial.
You vote yes?
No.
And you vote no. So that is one, two, three, four yeses and three nos. So council will have to, you know, weigh, but actually, you know, we have full amounts, so that's two-thirds. We can recommend to council denial, correct, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay. So this will go forth with the recommendation to council that they deny this request, and you'll, you'll-
Actually, with the full body, the two of us, it's not required.
Okay. Right. Right. Because we have everybody here. Okay. All right. Next up, um, number six on our, on our agenda is RZ two zero two one dash zero one five and RP two zero two one dash zero zero seven. Applicants Ontide LLC and Toby O'Neil are requesting a rezone of the property located at ten eighty-three Fray, parcel R three two two six zero of Kite Second Edition Block Five Lot One, and ten sixty-five West Fray, parcel R three two two six one of Kite Second Edition Block Five Lot Two, part of the city of Stevieville, Eryth County, Texas, from R one, single-family residential to R two point five integrated housing with simultaneous replating. Steve?
Yes, ma'am. So we've been working with Ontide.
Ontide?
We're in this process.
Ontide?
Ontide.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Need reason behind the, the inexcitation there. So in May, we had zoning requests, rezoning requests from, from R one to R three, and of course, that was denied. And through those discussions, it led to the, the invent of the R two point five. So this has been kind of a, a great process for us, because we've come up with some, some new ideas on how to make development easier here in Stevieville. So even though this was the case that maybe resulted in some of those thoughts, the applicant was just a little bit late on being the first one on the R two point five zoning. So, but he was a very close second. And so with that, you, what we're having tonight is that we, Mr. Burdick has this property, and, and he has a potential buyer in mind, and that buyer would like to do a townhome development. And what we're wanting tonight is that we consider this property for the rezone to R two point five, which would be a lesser density than if it were an R three property, which was denied on a previous case. That would reduce the units per acre to fourteen compared to twenty-four as an R point three, or R three. And also with this case, and as allowed by a provision very deep in the zoning code, is that you can have a rezoning request and a replat considered simultaneously. So that is the request tonight, is that the, typically, the ordinance requires that the rezoning request, it be acted upon, and then the replating follow, but with the request from the property owner and approval, that it can be a simult- simultaneous case. So not only do we have the rezoning request before you tonight to the R two point five, we also have a replat. And so Mr. Burdick has provided the current map of what the layout is for this particular block. But then, as we go to the next submittal, this is what the property would look like if the replat is approved. Should be able to expand it like this. And so they are taking the entire block. This is Mr., Mr. Burdick and Mr. O'Neil, representing both on the plat, and they are taking this, this block and using the two R one lots. They're going to reduce the footprint of those R one lots and create the third lot for the block. And so it would be a replat of the block into lots R one, one R through three R. So three lots in the block instead of the two lots that we have now. The plat application is included in the packet. Also included the information related to the R two point five zoning, as I mentioned before, and I think we've kind of talked about that several times tonight, because I know it's new, and make sure that we're all comfortable with that, because I think it's going to be a very popular zoning category for us moving forward. But I believe in Mr., obviously, Mr. Burdick is here tonight if we have any questions, and, and of course, I'd be glad to answer any questions for the commission.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have questions for Steve?
Uh, just clarification. All, all three lots, though, will be zoned for the R two point five. Is that correct?
Great question. Great question. The two lots will be R.1.
Okay.
They're going to remain, these lot 1R and 2R. Will remain R1. And the remainder lot will be the R2.5. Great question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Mr. Burdick, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Last time I was here, we didn't have a contract, but we have a contract now. I really like this buyer. She wants to renovate the mansion and build retail townhomes in the 2.5 area. She wanted to be here tonight, she's very ill, and couldn't make it. And Toby's under the weather, too, so...
No? Okay.
But, yeah, I think we did everything that the commission asked for.
What, what's your plans for the spot, the, the kind of long, narrow space between the two homes?
To be honest, I'm not certain.
Okay.
You know, it doesn't look like a lot of land.
Yeah.
On there, but it really is.
Okay. Okay.
So, I don't know exactly what Ms. Casey's plan is, but I, she's been working for months with engineers and architects to put together a very useful plan for all that space to work together.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Burdick? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezon and replating? Anybody who wishes to speak against? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I would move that we approve RZ 2021-017.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion?
I appreciate that Mr. Burdick and Mr. O'Neil listened to not only our comments, but also the comments of the, the residents in the area. And it looks like they've, they've worked with the buyer and have figured out a, a good plan going forward. I'm, I'm confident in this plan.
Yeah, I feel the same. I feel like this makes sense for the location and the property. I like it.
I'm still thinking it needs to remain a single family.
R1?
Yep. Because it's zoned out, there's future land use. There's plenty of townhomes going up around. The occupancy in those are going to be going down as more of them come up. And at one point, it's going to burst a bubble, and then, we're in a town with a bunch of empty buildings.
I would fear building single-family houses there, just because I don't know if they could sell them for enough to make it worth it.
You'd be surprised, especially that close to, to the two public schools that are there, too. But the concern I do have is that little piece coming back to Frye, becoming a street access.
Well, I think with the R2.5, which is what's being requested, you have the, the benefit of, these are, these are, each lot is going to be platted again, so, so these, these could, could be single-family. I mean, I mean, they're meant to be.
Yeah.
They're developed to be a, a single-family homes. Could they be rented to college students? Yeah, but so can a single-family home. So, I like, this, this is kind of an affordable option. So, it, it allows for those families who want to live close to the school to buy a new home, something they don't have to worry about putting a whole lot of money into, just so they can live comfortably. I, I think it's a really good option.
That's, I agree with Mary, in, in that what we lack in Stevenville is affordable housing for, for new buyers, for, for young buyers.
Right.
And this is a way for them to get in on owning something.
Without having to buy a rundown place to fix back up, or something that's been sitting there for 40, 60 years.
Yeah, so I, I see it as win. I, I think it's, it's exactly what we need.
This, this was basically why we created R2.5, is this property. I mean, that's what led us to, to this. And so, to, to not approve it would, I think, be not a good thing.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of recommending to counsel approval of this rezon request, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay. That will move forward to council with our recommendation for approval. Thank you, Mr. Burdick. Last item on our agenda is discussion of sign regulations relating to murals, chapter 154.
Yes, ma'am. Chapter 154 is actually our zoning ordinance, which requires that any revision comes before the council or the P and Z for consideration. So, this was actually reviewed by the Development Services Committee at a previous meeting. And I guess a little background here is that we had an application for a sign permit, and when it had included that in the packet. This particular mural did not meet the requirements of the sign application. And there were two reasons for that. First of all, the ordinance, which I have listed here for you, it must be a premises sign. And if we look at this mural, the applicant has allowed the persons that are sponsoring the sign to put their logos on the sign. And so, that would make it be considered an off-premise advertisement. Also, in the ordinance, it says that, in paragraph B, maximum 100% of the area of the building elevation on which it is painted, so you can cover the whole wall, but you can only have 10% of that area reflect words or symbols. And so, obviously, we have much more than 10% on this particular mural. I think if we look at other communities across the city, we see, or across the state, we see that a lot, a lot of cities are trying to make these signs, I guess, less regulated and kind of encouraged. In fact, one town that we looked at, they actually have a program that, that offers incentives for these top signs. And so, we wanted to, to give the applicant every opportunity. And so, we shared this with the Development Services Committee, and, and they reviewed this, and they made a, a recommendation that, basically, that we have that here. We, basically, the committee reviewed the sign regulations and basically said that we should consider reducing the, or allowing off-premise content, but making there be a, having a maximum amount.
Okay.
And then, also, as far as the verbiage on the sign, to address that as well. And so...
Did they specify maximum amount of off-premise signs? Like a percentage or something?
I believe we... And I, I read that.
I think it's 15, is it?
Is it 15%?
It's 15%.
15% for off...
15.
15% for off-premise? Oh, no. Okay, there's two questions here. One is the amount allowable for off-premise signs. And the other is how much of the sign itself can be words?
It's the off-premise, which is A1, must be a premises sign. And then, the second component of that would be paragraph B, which is the 10% of the mural for words and symbols.
Okay, so we are looking to increase B from 10 to 15, is that the suggestion?
I believe that's correct, yes, ma'am.
Will that really help with, with the mural that's been presented? Because it looks like the majority of the sign is actually the word E-Rath, so...
Seems like that's at least 15%, doesn't it?
The off-premise part is the advertising.
Yeah, off-premise.
Right, but there's two portions here, right? There's the off-premise portion, and then, there's the amount of verbiage allowed on the sign period, correct? Is that, am I understanding...
That's how I was...
Right. So, one, the, the amount of verbiage on the sign period looks to me to be about, I don't know, 50%? Like a...
I would almost...
80%?
75, 75.
75, 60.
Now, the, the amount of off-premise signage, oh, I don't know what...
It'd be about a quarter.
Yeah, it's looking like 25% to me.
Yeah. 20, 20 to 25.
Maybe 20? 20 might be accurate.
Yeah.
So, we have two things to decide, correct, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I apologize, but if you can let me try to look at another document.
Okay.
I believe I have notes from that, that I thought I had included in here. So, I apologize to the commission for this.
Where is this going?
Steve, it's in the, the first document was a report from Development Services, which on the premises sign agreed to eliminate the 10% limitation.
Oh, just eliminated completely?
Just take it off altogether in the Development Services report, which is the first page, which is the first report that came with the packet. And they agreed to have 15% on the premise, on the off-premise sign.
50%, 50% on the off-premise, and then...
And when you go into the staff report, the P and Z, that's just predicated on the previous Development Services report. So, the 10% is not even part of the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. It is page 114, page 114. So, the Development Services on, Committee on August 31st, 2021, voted unanimously and agreed that the 10% limitation relating to words and symbols for mural signs be removed.
Gotcha.
And that the premise content be limited to 15%.
Okay.
I had scrolled past that, so thank you, Mr. Barnes, for pointing that out. I thought I'd...
Okay.
That makes sense. That, that makes sense. And I feel like that's...
And so, so the committee did recommend the removal of that limitation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
All that appears, that strip on the bottom is 15%.
About 15%.
Okay, do we have any questions for Steve? Do I need to open this to a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions for Steve before we go to public hearing?
Where is this mural going?
It is right over here off Graham Street. The, I believe the applicant is here, and it's, is it quality print? Quality print.
Oh, yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead. If the applicant's here, would you like to come up and speak your piece?
Hi, everybody. My name's Lauren Emmons. Here is, I meant to include this. I emailed it, given Ms. Cox and Mr. Killen very big headache over this, because I did not even realize I needed a permit for this. But as y'all were talking about earlier, this is just something that has kind of like boomed in other towns. It's kind of a, they call it like a postcard look, and not trying to change or take away from Stevenville's heritage, or move into big city living or anything, but just trying to bring more tourism in. I don't, if you can go back to the picture, please, sir. The, the A, everything in it is part of E-Rath, since E-Rath is kind of like our hub to all the local areas. Because I do have a local print shop. I worked there for 10 years. I bought it six years ago, so customers are family. The T represents the Ben Hogan Museum in Dublin. Mary Yantus, her husband was Dick Yantus. They're the ones that bought the clover signs going in and out of Dublin. They're just, they're a big deal. So, just kind of like representing Stevenville, but also all of our small towns that some of us may live in. But just kind of bringing them into one little thing. People drive to Marfa to take a picture in front of, you know, an abandoned building. And although my building's not brand new, it does, it's been a lot of things, from dentist's office to everything else, and hopefully, it will be a print shop for 100 more years. But it's just something that we'd really like to do. When I thought of this idea and saw it in several other towns, I did not realize, which my, one of my best friends, she's the one that's painting the mural. She's also a local artist. Her name's Lauren also. Her signature's in the bottom right. I didn't realize how expensive it was. So, that's when we came up with the idea of getting it sponsored. And I talked to some of the tourism and stuff like that, but I never heard back from them. So, within two hours, I had sold out all the sponsorships and had more than enough to pay for it, to where that whatever's left over, we would keep for maintenance and touch-ups and corrections and edits and everything.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
I think it's a great idea.
Let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this alteration of sign regulations relating to murals? You, you wish to speak in favor? Please, sir, come to the mic. Give us your name and your address.
I'm Tom Hines, 729 West Tarleton. So, not knowing which side of the dais I was going to sit on tonight, I did come prepared. And I want to pass down these photographs. The first one is on the backside of Cheerful Heart. And just to let you know, that was done without a permit. But if you look at it, on the left side is Honeybee Street and Yellow Jacket Street. And it's got Cowboy Capital of the World. They're promoting tourism, all right, and Stevenville. The, and they do meet, well, I don't know if they meet the 10%. I'm not, that's not the point of this discussion for me. The next one is on the side of Rexall Drugs. And I'm not sure whether that was done with a permit, but notice that it's almost 100% letters. And then, we have the next one, which is the back of this building, which in its sense promotes Stevenville, because that's what it is. And so, I think that on item D on the staff report, the second staff report, I would recommend that we, on, under 12-point, 12-3.5 mural sign that D, where that, where we add or recommend adding, may promote tourism, commerce, and economic development. And for Lauren to go get sponsors to do this, who are merchants downtown for commerce and economic development, I think is a good idea. And I just want to show you that, that even Cheerful Heart did have an understanding of why Stevenville is important, and they put it on their mural. So, I think it's a good option. And people driving up and down the street there are going to see who all is involved. And, and, yeah, they're paying to get that, you know, that promotion, but, but it also announces a whole lot of commerce to Stevenville as they go past our building.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hines. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else here wishes to speak in favor of this? Anybody wish to speak against? All right, we'll close the public hearing. I, I guess we need a motion? Do we need, we need a motion to recommend changes to the city council?
Yes, sir. Recommendation to move forward with the...
With these...
The suggestions from the Development Services Committee.
All right, so I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance revisions as requested.
Second.
And that's a second? Okay. Yeah, I like it. I think 15% sounds good for off-premise signs. And, yeah, I don't see any reason to to worry about the amount of words on a sign. It works for me.
I will, that Slim Pickets is actually the name of the business now. The Rexall Drug is, is the historic, it's a historic building. But, yeah, I, I think the, the restriction on words is kind of unusual.
Yeah.
But, but I, I do think it's important to, to maybe restrict off...
Yeah.
Off-brand advertising.
Yeah. Okay.
Off-premise advertising. Yeah.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to counsel approval of these alterations to our sign regulations relating to murals, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? All right. You get your sign. Awesome. Okay, that's it. That's all we got on our agendas. Well, I, actually, it does have to go to city council. They're, they're the big bosses, so, so make your case there. We, we just recommend. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for your little one for being so patient. That is boring stuff for a little one that size.
Yeah.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion...
Second.
All right. He's so adjourned.